December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one Select Board Meeting. Tonight, we have the swearing in of Kevin Keen, which is going to begin momentarily. We're going to do that in order to have a quorum of the board. I guess we're waiting for participant Marcus via Zoom and Marion is not yet here. And I know many of you came here for the occasion for Kevin swearing in. And we want to, first of all, I want to say to Kevin, congratulations. Welcome to the board. Watch your campaign closely. I know you'll bring a lot of great ideas to this board and really look forward to working with you in the years to come, moving Needham forward. Just a big congratulations is in order, and it's a proud moment. We all remember that moment for ourselves and for our family. And it's just terrific to see all the people in attendance and all the people watching online. So with that, I would like to invite Ms. Eaton up for the official swearing in.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Select Board.
As a member of the Select Board.
For the town of Needham.
For the town of Needham.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the rules, regulations, and bylaws.
And the rules, regulations, and bylaws.
Of the town of Needham.
Of the town.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I.
Kevin.
Kevin Keen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And I will support the Constitution thereof.
And I.
And I, Kevin Keen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You are so sworn.
Thank you.
Now.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Eaton, and again, congratulations, Kevin. Is Marcus on?
He's coming.
He's coming, okay. I would like to, now, before we go to the public comment period, just take a moment for a moment of silence. We lost this week our chief engineer, Tony Delgazza. He was a gentleman. He had the highest integrity. He was a terrific town employee. He was in his thirtieth year with the town, a Needham High School graduate. And if you look around the town, you can see so many of his projects that he had input on and that we followed his lead on and made a, I think it was set a fingerprint on so many things in town, from the bridges to the buildings, to the roadways, to the infrastructure. He will be sorely missed, gone too soon. So with that, I'd like to offer a moment of silence. And I know a lot of you came to see Kevin, so please don't feel rude if you need to leave to get on to other things. That is fine with us, and it's better if you, I'm not kicking anybody out, but it's better if you do it together so that it's not interrupting during the meeting, but we'd love it, we're happy if you stay to watch our meeting. So thank you all for coming. So the first item on the agenda is during our public comment period, and we were notified of two people who wish to speak. The first group that notified us is for, it was Lars, and I don't know, Keith, if you want to speak also, or if you want to come up to the table for quieter Needham. Yep, come on. Oh, Marcus is on?
Yeah.
There he is. Hi, Marcus.
Hey, how's everybody doing?
Great. Great to see you. So if you read our policy, we've changed it quite a bit over since we asked, had a couple of years ago, where you're allowed to speak. We give three minutes for the proponent to speak. We will not interrupt you, but we do want to hear what you have to say, and then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. So the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with all of you tonight. My name is Lars Anyam. I live at fifty-six Meadowbrook Road, and we're here with Keith LaForte. Sorry.
Five oh four Chestnut Street, and I'm a town meeting member for Precinct D.
We're both founders of, two of the founders of Safer, Quieter Needham. We're an all-volunteer resident group here, Needham residents asking the town to make one-time investments in the safety of our railroad crossings here in town. With improved safety, we could eliminate non-emergency train horns at each of the crossings, which would have a huge positive impact on the quality of life and the economic vitality in town for thousands of Needham residents and businesses. Over the last many months, this board, as well as the town manager Fitzpatrick and her team, have taken several positive steps to explore this issue and look at these investments. These steps include unanimously adopting a quiet zone goal over the summer, communicating plans with the MBTA this fall, and putting together a deliberate implementation plan, which is quite clever and encouraging. And next Tuesday, the plan, if things move forward as planned, this board will be voting on the FY twenty-two, sorry, twenty-three to twenty-seven capital improvement plan. And that draft plan includes investments, many of the investments needed to improve railroad crossing safety here in Needham. Over the last six months, Safer, Quieter Needham has collected over eight hundred signatures from residents and businesses who support making these one-time safety improvements. Yesterday, we submitted to you a letter and all eight hundred and two signatures, as well as an analysis that shows the broad base of support for these investments. As highlighted in the memo, nearly sixty percent of the petition signers live more than a quarter mile from the crossings, as opposed to just being those most directly affected. And so on behalf of those who signed that petition so far, we support you and encourage you to adopt the quiet zone investments that are highlighted in the draft plan. And we wanted to just say thank you very much for all your hard work on this important safety issue and quality of life issue for those of us in town. So thank you very much.
Lars, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just, I echo Lars' statement. Yeah, we're thrilled to see the forward progress on this important issue to so many in town. So we thank you for the hard work, and it is noticed, so thank you. Thank you all.
Great, appreciate that. And it is something where, you know, you brought this to our attention, again, a resurgence of it, and things have changed, as we talked about with, you know, the Sunday service and the hourly service, and it's something we're very interested, it's a priority on our goal list, so, and thanks for working cooperatively. Any comments? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, public comment, Ross, Mr. Ross Donald. Hi, Mr. Donald. Just as I reiterate, I'll reiterate, we have three minutes for speaking, and then we'll have to move on, but the floor is yours.
This is kind of a joyous occasion, and I'm sure we'll be reflecting on Dan's career, and this is all good, but I have another matter, and it concerns a story that I've been learning about. On Wednesday, May thirty-first, in two thousand seventeen, the body of Laura Shafrina, a Russian immigrant, eighty-one years old, was found on her floor by her daughter, who was doing a wellness check. Tammy Galloway, her next-door neighbor, was a suspect right away. I could go into great detail, and I'm fascinated by this. I've been attending the trial and learning a lot, and I found that the process that's going on at Norfolk Superior Court is a demonstration of serious people using a legal system to deal with serious matters. Now let's look at the Needham Housing Authority. When there are issues and concerns, they are often addressed with a one-page complaint form, a seven-step procedure for addressing concerns, recognizing the chain of command or whatever, and a twenty-page grievance process. I took the complaint process to try and resolve a couple of issues, more or less as a demonstration, as an experiment to see how it would work. This is where I was directed, and this is what I did. It took twelve months to resolve getting the Wi-Fi workable for the residents at the community building at Five Chambers Street. This was after constantly pestering them to see what we could do about it. It took, on another matter, it took ten months to get a pile of construction debris picked up. Now you might conclude that the complaint process worked. Well, what worked was publicity. What happened was I learned that in the nineteen eighties, there was a tenant organization at Linden Chambers, and they published a newsletter for the neighborhood called the Linden Letter. And I thought, well, that's kind of cute. I like that. I think I'm going to revive it, and I did, in a fashion. And so with photos of the debris and stories about the Wi-Fi online, things happened. They didn't like the negative publicity. I don't like the negative publicity myself. Maybe we could turn that around and say, good story, something happened, and it worked out, but those two issues were resolved. The debris was picked up. What happened to me, however, as a result of the publicity and the other publicity I tried to gain, bringing up issues, is that I've been served with a thirty-day notice to evict. Previous complaints and issues that I've brought up through proper channels, I think, going to meetings and bringing up issues, have been previous eviction notices and pre-termination conferences, which I would declare is not an example of non-serious people taking the legal system and abusing it in petty authoritarian and bullying ways. There was an article recently, a month ago, in the Needham Times, below the fold, about an organization, I met the guy, Terry, I can't remember his last name, two years ago, who started an organization called StopTheBullying.org. There have been changes in the laws, and you've had the opportunity to appoint a resident commissioner, which you decided to waive for various reasons that everybody found acceptable at the time. The most, well, the most recent and flagrant abuse of the powers, of the bullying powers of the housing authority, has been to take a resident who's going through all kinds of personal matters, basically, just to be clear, this fellow, I won't name him, but a few residents do know who he is. He had a friend, an acquaintance, I should say, visit him. Something happened. They both overdosed. His acquaintance died. The first thing that, not the first thing, but near the top of the first thing that the housing authority did was move to evict the fellow. This is, again, another example of, I don't know, I don't know what to call it, but it's totally inappropriate, and this is just, I think what's going to happen for me and my part, is to come before forums like this and tell you the story about what's happening on an ongoing basis at the Needham Housing Authority. So this is the beginning. This is chapter one.
Okay. Mr. Donald, we appreciate you coming to us and sharing your words. Thank you. Yes.
Ross, come on back. And I don't, you know, I think it's forum, and I agree with the rules. I just want to be clear.
Mr. Matthews.
You know, I know that you have concerns about the housing authority, and you've spoken, and you're up, and you're within the rules. A lot of members of public don't understand, don't know, or may not be aware that the housing authority is a separate agency from the town government, and has its main responsibility or supervision comes from the state. Now, you've described, and I'm not going to argue, that the way that is working is clearly a grievance there. I just, if this board does not take action, that's not because we're not share, we don't share your concerns. Housing Authority, as you know, it's an agency that has a lot of challenges, and it does have a board of elected and appointed members that try to work on this. You may want to try to take your concerns to the town manager. If there is a role for the town government in this, then she's the person that can provide advice and direction to the board. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, EverSource grant of location, one thirty-eight Richardson Drive, Joanne Calendar via Zoom. I'll give you a moment to get off mute.
Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see you. You are here on three petitions. We will start with the first one, one thirty-eight Richardson Drive. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Yes, EverSource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately fourteen feet of conduit in Richardson Drive, and this is for the purpose of servicing one thirty-eight Richardson Drive.
Thank you. This is a, first of all, Mrs. Patrick, everything's in order on this application? Great. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here or on Zoom who wishes to speak to this application? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion?
Chairman.
Yes.
And I just, I, you did, I believe that the town manager has told us that everything's in order.
She did.
I would move to approve the application, as presented in the gun of materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, fifty-five Countryway.
Yes, thank you. EverSource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately thirty-eight feet of conduit in Countryway, and this is to provide electric service to the new customer at fifty-five Countryway.
Everything is in order, Mrs. Patrick.
Yes, it is.
It is. Nice to hear. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this application, either in person or via Zoom? We will check the attendees. Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion on this application?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately thirty-eight feet of conduit in Countryway.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marion?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Last item that's concerning you, two hundred and three Countryway application, Ms. Calendar.
Yes, thank you. Again, EverSource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately eighteen feet of conduit into Countryway, and this is to provide new service to our customer at two oh three Countryway.
Great. Thank you. Everything is in order, Mrs. Patrick.
Yes, it is.
Three for three. Terrific. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in person or via Zoom? You can raise your hand on this application. Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately eighteen feet of conduit in Countryway.
Okay, there's a motion. Motion and a second has been made. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Marcus?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Kevin?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye. That's unanimous. Have a great night, Ms. Calendar. Thank you for joining us.
You all do the same. Thank you so much. Bye now.
Next item on the agenda is introduce department managers, and I invite down Katie King, Karis Lustig, and the new town department managers to come to the table and have a discussion. Thank you.
Part of your job responsibility, if you can bring your own chairs up.
Well, good evening, and I think this is terrific, a chance for us to meet you formally. I know we've met you in passing, and I will turn the floor over to you, Katie, for the introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And it's great to see a full team up here in person. So I have the pleasure of introducing Kim Hewitt, who's actually the farthest down on the table. Kim's our new director of the Needham Free Public Library. A few things, you have her resume in your agenda packet, but she most recently came to us from the Waltham Public Library. She was the circulation department head. She held a few roles before that at the Newton Public Library. She also is carrying on a Needham tradition of being part of professional development organizations. She's the vice president, president-elect of the Mass Library Association. She loves to travel. She's a birder. She lives nearby with her partner, Alan, and their dog, Julep. And I'd just like to say, it's been wonderful onboarding her, and I've really been taken both with her analytical approach to looking at systems and process, but she is that heart of people person, and she's gotten to know so many people in such a short amount of time. I can't wait to see what she does from here. So I'll turn it over to Kim to say a few words.
Thank you. I'm so excited to be here. I'm spending my first month really getting to know my staff, meeting with them one-on-one. We're, you know, trying to identify new opportunities to serve the residents in Needham. Hopefully, you all saw that we're exploring a library of things for non-traditional materials, and we're excited to see the poll results from that, but everyone seems really excited about it. And I'm trying to, you know, get a handle on the budgeting process and all of that, and look forward to, you know, going through this round this year and being able to really do all of that on my own next year. So, thank you. Nice to meet you.
That's great. Thank you and welcome, and can't wait to see the next chapter that the library has to offer, but really appreciate meeting you ahead of the meeting and also during the meeting. And with that, we have some DPW and other announcements, so, Karis?
So first, I want to formally introduce Cecilia Sanchak to you, who is our Director of Finance Administration for Public Services. She's worked for the town for, I think it's close to six years now. She served for five years as an admin analyst in our Building Maintenance Division, and then when it merged into DPW. And in just her six years in town, has been here through a lot of transitions and staff and processes. She was a lead on the green communities, the town becoming a green community. And obviously, I cared very much about who my successor was in the role, and I'm very pleased to have Cecilia taking that on.
Yeah, so I've been in the role for a little over a year now, and basically, my focus has been hiring the rest of the admin division as people leave promotional opportunities or retire after thirty years. So it's been a lot of filling that in, kind of restructuring the division as we have merged building maintenance, and then kind of finalized with a ton of new managers and department heads and stuff in the division. Also, just consolidate, we're looking at consolidating a work order system and project management, so kind of overseeing a lot of the organizational stuff within Public Works to better support the operations divisions. And then the last kind of exciting thing is just with all of the vacancies that we have in Public Works right now, working on, we're a test pilot for the succession planning program within the town and figuring out how to bring people up from their ranks and how to keep them here.
Great. Thank you, Cecilia, and clearly, we all worked with you at a prior role, and you're a terrific mentor and Karis, so that's great. Congratulations. Karis?
And then the second person I will introduce who started with our department a little more recently, but is also not new to anyone on this board, is Michael Retzke. As you all know, we were very lucky to get him from our Building Design and Construction Division, where he had worked for, I think about five years.
Almost six.
And as he's slowly transitioning off of wrapping up those projects and moving over into his role as superintendent for water, sewer, and drains, what you may be less familiar with, with Mike is his background, really in the water, sewer, and drainage industry, working in the private sector, on the engineering side and the construction side. So we're very excited and have him onboard with us. I believe he just passed his first, I think, three licensure tests two weeks ago. I'm sure he has D-one certification for water distribution, and again, we're very excited to have him onboard.
Wonderful. Good evening. Nice to see everybody.
Nice to see you.
In person. So, real quick, just so, just so everybody understands what water and sewer does. So we oversee sixty-five miles of drain, one hundred and twenty-six miles of sewer, and around one hundred and thirty-five miles of water main in town, also the Charles River Water Treatment Plant. So that's all under our auspices, along with any culverts or streams and brooks that may come into play with those culverts. So we look forward to following a bunch of goals and trying to fulfill some of these goals by being more proactive than reactive, unfortunately, is, you know, with an infrastructure that we have in town, while it's in great shape. We do have water breaks occasionally. We do have other stuff we have to come and fix, drainage, and its concerns and others. So we're going to look to stay proactive and respond to, also, we have numerous customer complaints that come in from water meters and other issues, and we try to respond to those as quickly as we can and respond to the, all the customers here. I've been a resident in Needham since nineteen eighty-eight, so I'm familiar with the town, and I'm so happy to be in this position. Thank you.
Great. We're happy that you're in this position, too. When I heard the news, you know, I work with you both on a volunteer basis, as you know, and then when I look at the projects, Rosemary Memorial, if you can do those projects, you could do almost anything in town, those, you know, challenging, and you were terrific at that role, and welcome to this new role.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kate?
Chair, I'm going to start with a quick story. We had the opportunity in two thousand fourteen to create a management fellow program, and we were fortunate enough that Chuck, who's our newest HR director, our third HR director, applied for that position, and Karis was in on that interview, and I should have known he had this great potential, because he asked us what we liked about the town, and we probably spent twenty minutes talking about how much we loved to work or whatever, and he just sat there and kind of took notes. And I said, he is now doing that on the other side of the table, and he's an incredible interviewer, as we learned at that interview. Chuck began his career, as I said, as a management fellow, then he was our human resources administrator, the assistant HR director, and now the HR director. He, having worked at every, almost every role, probably you have filled in as the admin on occasion, answering the phone and doing the copying. Really, that's a great way to be the director, is when you know the roles of everyone else. Some of the things that Chuck has done is he serves on the steering committee for the West Suburban Health Group, which, as you know, is where we achieve, we get our health insurance for our town employees. It's a great role. He facilitated a town-wide employee engagement effort that, one of the succession plans that Cecilia was talking about, and he recently coordinated the classification and compensation plan for one hundred and thirty positions in town that we rolled up in July. I think, from my perspective, Chuck has a remarkable ability to be both technically proficient and incredibly good to communicate with people of all, of all ages and walks of life. So, so proud to introduce him as our new HR director. Chuck, did you want to say a couple of things about what you're working on?
Sure. Thank you, Kate. It's great. Thank you. I'm truly honored to be promoted into this role. It's a real honor to work and lead this department. A couple of things, a few areas that we're focusing on in the department. First, streamlining and digitizing some of our processes. So we have recently procured an applicant tracking system, so we're taking a largely manual process of hiring and transitioning to electronic, which should speed up and streamline our hiring process. And then a few other processes we're trying to digitize and streamline as well. And then a few other processes we're trying to digitize and streamline as well. Another area is recruitment. We're really trying to enhance the quality and diversity of our applicant pools and so that we're getting the best opportunities to hire into the, into the open roles. We have the applicant tracking system that we have in place actually has a few exciting features. It blinds the personally identifiable information for applicants so that hiring managers are only seeing what's on the resume and the merits and known names or addresses. So the applicant tracking system also collects EO data so that we can measure and see how we're doing in terms of getting a diverse candidate pool, as well as seeing how reflective our hiring is of those candidate pools. And then finally, retention. We're always looking to retain our top talent now. I think it goes without saying, we're in a war for talent now with the great resignation going on. And we're trying to find ways to first promote our existing tools to retain our top talent and also continue to find ways to support our staff through training and development, succession planning, as we touched on, and supporting some of our new leaders here as well to support their staff, which is really crucial. So again, I'm really honored to be here. I thank Kate for her tremendous support of employee initiatives in general. Thank you to the board for your support throughout the years as well and dedication to good governance in general. And again, it's an honor and privilege to be here and to work for and with our dedicated staff. So, thank you.
Chuck, thank you, and thank you on your new, congratulations on your new position. And to hear about those initiatives, I think they're going to make a large difference. And, you know, your office, as you know, touches all the employees in town. And from the employees I've talked to, it's always, you know, Chuck's the go-getter. He's the go-to person for this or for that, and that speaks volumes. So, thank you. Open up to the board, any comments for our employees? Dan?
Congratulations and good luck. You know, I'm sitting here thinking about, you know, the public, to the extent that they follow town government, they look at the members of the boards they see on TV. But it's really the day-to-day work of the staff that makes the difference, and particularly the management staff that directs all the other folks in the, in the chain of command, and then it goes all the way down to the individual vehicle operator or, or school teacher or any other position. But it's a team, it's a team business. And if people think we're doing the right thing, it's because you make us look good. And so it's great to see you. And I, and take, and these are all well-deserved appointments, and it's really good to, good to see them. I'm going to take an extra minute because I know everybody at the table, except this is my first time meeting Kim. And I want to welcome you to Needham. And I can highlight, for those that don't follow this, our town charter requires for your appointment to have been made, not just the approval of the town manager, in which this board, in who this board has 400% confidence. You had to get a vote from the Board of Library Trustees, who are seven passionate people elected to office about, and they are dedicated to the library, and they don't care to be told what to think by us. So you got that extra approval. It's a, it's a challenging, changing field. I know you're right, you know, your, your, your background and experience and your commitment really qualify you. So I want to welcome you to Needham and wish you all the best. Thank you. And thanks to, thanks to everyone else.
Thanks. Well said.
I've said nice things about you all before.
Thank you. You get the best. Mary?
I was just going to make a brief comment. I am grateful that all of you are here. And similarly, I would just say to Kim, I don't think you should feel obligated to work for Needham for the next 50-plus years. Right? But I do hope, I do hope that all of you will be able to look back at these years and think of them as among the very best years of your career, and that you will feel well-supported by the town here. We are really grateful to have you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Yes, Kevin? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to you guys. This is a big deal, and I want to wish you congratulations. Well done. Thank you. Marcus?
I think everyone's pretty much said all the things that need to be said, so I don't want to repeat too many of them. But just much appreciation for signing on to be a part of this town and pushing us forward and keeping us on our toes and, you know, doing things that are leading us in new directions, but also keeping some of the things the same. And, you know, reaching out for support whenever you need it. I know Kate, Katie, Karis, everyone's going to be there to have your back and to get you what you need to be successful in your long tenure here in Needham.
Well said. Thank you, Marcus. Yes, we are one family, and we talk about that on the board, being a family. And, you know, we work together and pull together. So, again, welcome to you and congratulations to the rest. And enjoy your evening. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, perfect. Yes?
And if I may, I'd like to move the appointments and consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion for the appointments and consent. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Yes. Yay.
Dan?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Next item on the agenda, public information officer update, website refresh. Ms. Gonzalez, I think you're joining us on the side of the table. Is that correct? That's great. While we get set up, you're here to discuss our updated website that you're working on, the redesign. And we look forward to seeing what it has to offer. So, actually, looks great from this. I think we all got a little preview of it earlier, and I know it's been something that's been asked for by the residents. Perfect. Great. We're on. Ms. Gonzalez?
Thank you. Thank you for having me, and congratulations, Kevin. Nice to meet you. So as you know, over the last couple of months, we have been working to redesign the town of Needham's website. The last time, the Needham website was refreshed, was approximately three years ago. And so, leading up to the launch of the new website, which will take place in the first quarter of the new year, we've held a number of public engagement forums to ask the residents what kinds of information they want to see on the website, the design of the website, and our goals are to make the website more visually attractive, more user-friendly, and more accessible. So I would love to walk you through this. I want to preface this with a couple of points. So what you're looking at is not an actual website. I'm not going to be able to click through a lot of this. You're looking at an interactive picture, basically. The other thing I want to mention is some of the photos that are on the website are placeholders. So you'll see that the content and the images don't necessarily align. The other thing I want to mention is there's a difference between a website redesign and content changes. And so the content on the website, those changes are an ongoing process. In fact, we will, in January, train at least one, if not two, people in each department to be able to confidently access and update their webpages. So that's going to, that's going to continue even after we launch the site. So with that, if you don't mind, I will walk you through from top to bottom. Feel free to stop me with any questions or ask them at the end. Okay, so the first thing I want to mention is the town of Needham seal. So that will appear on every page that a resident goes to, and it will be clickable to come back to the homepage. So right now, there's no way for people to go back to the homepage without clicking back, 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 back. So this is just an easy thing to make the website more user-friendly. You'll see these mega menus here. These are similar to what we have today. This is a content thing. So we will change some of those headings to make them more focused on the community. For example, simple change, but we'll call it your government as opposed to government. We'll add a community button, which will feature community organizations, volunteer opportunities, that kind of stuff. We're also going to simplify these mega menus so that there's not so much information in your face. The social media buttons, so these are all the town's social media graphics. This whole section will scroll. So as you scroll down the page, that section will scroll with you. Again, just an easy thing so that it's front and center for people. This feels a little bit, the image is a little blurred, so we're working on fixing that. What we heard most frequently during the discussions that we've had with the community is they really want a task-oriented website that they can go to and either perform an action or find information. So these buttons here are the most frequently requested things, tasks that people want to complete. So alert to notify me, people can sign up to be notified about field closures, for example. Or when we had our COVID email list, that you'd go there to sign up for COVID notifications. Online bill pay, this is a huge one. People love the options that they do have to pay bills online, so we made sure that that was front and center. Job postings, we have a lot of job postings that we're trying, or jobs that we're trying to fill. So this, again, front and center for folks. The newsletter, which we started back in June, has been really successful in getting out information. So we want to make sure that people can, A, access the most recent issue of the newsletter and B, subscribe easily. Agendas and minutes for all board and committee meetings, and then report public's work, public works issues, which this needs to be changed to say public works. Again, most frequently used, those will probably remain the top six from, for the foreseeable future. Although if we, you know, if people say they need to do something else, it becomes a more frequently requested task, we can change that.
Cindy, I just see Marcus has his hand up. I don't want to go.
Sorry, Marcus.
Marcus?
Oh, no, no problem. As far as the newsletter, is that going to be under the alert or notify me as well? If they click there to get the newsletter, or would it just be coming from this point right here?
Just under this point here.
Okay. Is that something that previously they're able to subscribe to the newsletter or opt into that, or am I making that up?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
I said the newsletter as it stands, what we do now, is that something that people are able to opt into at this point, to opt in to get, to get that?
It is. It's on the current website. It says sign up for the town newsletter, but it's not in a graphically, it's not a graphic image. It's just a link, so it's hard for people. It doesn't, it doesn't jump out at people.
Okay, so then that's why I was asking, as far as the alert or notify me, if they're able to sign up now, are they going to be able to sign up for it with the alert or notify or in the newsletter, they can sign up to get it there? Or just, do you know what I'm asking? Does that make sense?
I do. There's separate systems, and they don't talk to each other, as I have figured this out. But it's something worth asking Civic Plus, so we will continue to work with Civic Plus. They're our partner ongoing. So it's something we can talk to them, though.
Okay, yeah, I was just thinking, as many things you can be alerted or notified for, a one-stop shop to kind of get those, instead of having to come to the website, as much as we want people to be familiar with the new design and to be as friendly to the community as possible. Thank you.
Okay, so these next four graphic buttons are Police, Parks and Rec, Public Works, and Library. These are the departments that are most often searched or Google searched. So we have these four front and center. Again, as we get any indication that there are other departments that are being more frequently searched, we can change those as well. Our news and highlights section, so again, this is where the images and the, the text doesn't line up, which is placeholder. But right now, if you look at our website, the news goes down the center of the webpage, and people no longer read vertically on a webpage. They are reading horizontally. So people are now used to scrolling, whereas once upon a time, scrolling was more annoying. So we've, we've created a news and highlights section that people read. They scroll down, they can read, you can click, I wish I could click, but you can click through and get additional news. You can also scroll, click all news and get even more news and information. The calendar section was also one of the things I heard a ton of feedback from people. So the way the calendar is today, as you know, it's one calendar. You have to sort of go in and know what you're looking for if, if it's not front and center. So what you can do, what we'll be able to do on this one is there are three calendars. There's a general calendar that lists everything. There's a meetings calendar, which is public meetings. And then there's an events calendar. So like the blue tree lighting, for example, would be under the events calendar as well as the general calendar. You don't see it here. It hasn't yet been added, but there will be an option for the public to submit events. We will have to put a process in place for determining which of those events are, you know, are okay to post. But again, we've heard from a lot of our community partners that they would like to be able to put community-type events on the town's website. And then finally here, again, this is all based on analytic data. So the popular services are the topics that people are most frequently looking for on the website, be it they got to the website through a Google search or they used the search button up here. We can change these depending on the time of year. So summer, for example, you may have more people searching for pool information. We've integrated the town's Facebook page here as well, so just another way to get across messages. And then the footer, contact information for town hall. When you click on other town buildings, it'll give you contact information for all other town buildings. So I'm going to scroll back up. One other thing I want to mention is, in addition to the website, the package that we're getting with Civic Plus is giving us both a new app. So we have an app today. Nobody uses it. It's not much more friendly than the desktop version. So the app will be a place that people can quickly access events, meetings, a lot of the information that's on the website in a mobile-friendly form. And finally, we will get a webmaster. So as part of the package, we get five to 10 hours a month where we can say to Civic Plus, we need you to update these six pages. Here's what we need the updates to be, and they will take care of it for us, which gives, gives us a little more capacity. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Cindy, and thank you for taking the lead on this. I know it's been something that we hear from citizens quite a bit. You know, when you, even when you talk communications, what are you going to do about the website? What could, and this looks like a complete, you know, night and day change. So I think this is going to be terrific. Just a couple of questions that I have or comments. I think the search function has to be really, really well done. I know that right now it's easier to Google something on the town website that'll bring you to it than actually do it internally on the site. So I think that would be a good idea. And then also, I know that a lot of people look to book, like Memorial Park or this Powers Hall, or, you know, certain events, maybe a 5K, maybe that's also more prominent so that people can find out a way to find those forms to do that type of booking, instead of searching around, you know, for where to find that. But overall, I think it's a great step in the right direction and looking forward to the finished product. Questions, comments?
Yeah, actually.
Yes. Kevin?
Cindy, thank you. That was great. Having recently come off the hustings, I will tell you, you should know that so many people want you to succeed. This is a big role. They're really looking to it to succeed. So best wishes to you. And how does this scroll on the phone? I'm assuming so on, do you have a sample of it?
I don't, but on any other good website today, if you scroll, it looks very much like what you see on the desktop, but it fits your phone, right? That's what this will look like. And that, that's separate from the app, which will also look the same, but functionality will be different.
Okay. And then the popular services, do they automatically, like, rehire out themselves? That's not.
No, so I'll have to go in and do that. In fact, Civic Plus just partnered with Google Analytics. So on a weekly or monthly or yearly basis, we can look and see what are people looking for. And based on that, we can go in and change those buttons.
Okay, great. Good luck.
Great. Good luck. I love it. Great. Any further comments? Mary Ann?
And is, does the work with Google Analytics also pop easily for you then, all the search types of information, so you can see those shifts? I was going to say, one of the ones that I know is about to come up that I don't think I, you mentioned, although you might have, while I was looking for a new pen, was the RTS, where at that time of year when the schedule gets wonky and everybody needs to know when you can actually drop things off. So I was surprised that that one wasn't popping up.
I think this is back now from October, November, so that's probably why it didn't pop up to the top.
Yeah, in that time of year. But great. I think, you know, websites are really challenging. And as I recall, when we moved three years ago, that was really a quantum leap. This to me looks right now less a quantum leap, but I think the format issues will be a huge benefit. To the extent that any work we do with Google creates something that is more searchable will be huge. And then I know people are just looking for current content. You know, Miles and I, I think, have been amazed at how many people have said, well, I went to try to look for this committee, but the most recent minutes are from February.
Sure.
You know, and those kinds of issues are issues we'll need to figure out.
Of course, minutes do have to get turned in before Cindy can be blamed.
That's not a, that's not a website issue, it's a different issue, but yes.
I do think, obviously, the number one issue people have had and have raised is the search capability. And so, and that's when I, when I started this, I wanted to sort of understand what is the problem? And the problem, part of the problem was that folks who are responsible within the departments and divisions for updating the website hadn't been trained, right? So they hadn't been trained, they didn't know how to optimize the search function. That's why I'm extremely excited that so many of our staff are being trained in January, because search optimization is the number one thing that they'll cover, which should make a difference. There's so much information on our website and it's overwhelming.
You just can't get it.
Yeah, so I'm, that should help.
And then the last thing that I was just thinking of, you know, it's interesting, you talked about getting something and you said it wasn't very clickable because it didn't have an image. I'm just going to relay, one of the things that I remember from back when I did this all the time is there are people who click on links, and there are people who click on pictures, and they're different people. So you actually need to have both.
Yep.
And it's critically important.
Yeah, yeah. With the, the seal in the top left-hand corner was not initially clickable. And in one of the more recent forums we had with the public, they said, I want to be able to click on that. Actually really helpful information, because that's not, it didn't cross my mind.
Yeah, it's just a fascinating thing that you watch different people clicking different places when they're looking for the same.
The old blue hyperlink, you know, click here, and that's always a good look. But that's great comments from the board. Any other comments? Yes, Dan?
Couple, one, on, on the cert, on, as you're working on the search function, would the, we have the ability to do like advanced searches in the, in the internal function?
It's a good question. I don't know, but there are a couple of us who are getting an advanced training, so it's something that I can ask.
Because when, I actually, I'm used to using, you know, Google was the number one search engine because it finds everything. But the internal engine, for me, once you found what you're looking for, the main problem that I have is I know exactly that I'm using all the right terms, but I'm get 100 responses to something, and I'm looking for the ones for the two or three most recent. And I find it very difficult, where it's usually with, with some other engines, you could say, well, what time is this? Or, or some other keywords that you could put in or whatever. I don't know if you're going to have that or not.
I don't know. It's, like I said, I will, I will ask our trainer about it. I think another, another challenge is that this is, there are so many people who are responsible for the websites that the keywords, the things that you were talking about, are things that people have to think about when they input the terms, but.
Maybe just a date range. The other question I have is, when I look at this, and maybe I'll get more used to it. I've, I've, to me, some of the, the header text looks like a smaller font size than I would expect. Now, is that something that I'm going to get used to? Is that the way it works?
I'm not sure it will look like that on your desktop. Again, it's the clickable image, so it's not 100% exactly the way you're going to see it on your computer. But I don't know until I see it on the website.
Like with our currency, I definitely have that issue. And other people speak to me and they say, look, your, your menu headings are tiny. These are, these are bigger. I can read them sitting from here. But I didn't know if, but I know that there's a kind of a, an aesthetic or an artistic thing that people get used to, that what you might think is the best way really isn't for something that's going to be in place for a long time.
You know, I don't, I, so I don't know the answer to your question. I will say, the way that the, the text and the fonts on the current website are not the ones that will be on this website, mostly because of accessibility issues. So the fonts that are being used on our website are all fonts that are ADA compliant and allow screen readers to more easily read the text on the webpage.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. It's a great, it's a great job.
It is. Marcus?
Yeah, thank you so much. As far as what Dan was kind of, where he left off about those fonts, or when I'm looking at the six items right here with the alert notify me, will it have that option, like when you hover over it, will it kind of magnify to kind of be a little bit bigger? Is that something with some of the links and things like that? I know some people, you know, appreciate that to kind of.
It changes the color?
Okay, but doesn't, okay. Okay, I was just thinking of font size, that could be something, and you know, it could be too late, but just something to think about, to kind of just magnify a little bit, so it kind of pops out and people can see if they're having trouble. And then the other question I had is, as far as when the go-live happens, how soon thereafter from the trainings to the go-live? And then, you know, making sure that, you know, all the people that are getting trained are as competent, is ready to update. I would say, you know, not immediately, but be able to make those updates fairly, fairly quickly, depending on what happens, you know, in their department and things like that.
Sure. So the trainings will actually start to take place prior to the official launch of the website. So folks who are being trained, who've never had any kind of training on the website, will be trained first. And then folks who've had training, maybe it was a couple of years ago, or maybe they've never been formally trained, but a coworker taught them some things, they'll be trained at the end of January. So my expectation is everybody who's responsible for updating the webpages will be trained prior to the go-live of the website.
Okay.
And on the font size, I will, before we finalize this, ask if it's possible to increase the font size.
Yes, please.
Yeah, and also what Marcus said, principles of universal design among those, okay.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, that was a big, Civic Plus is actually pushing that, so I was happy to hear that that was a main focus there.
Thank you.
And the launch date, where anticipated?
First quarter of the year. My hope is January, February. I'm always hesitant to commit to a date when it's not.
Of course. That's outrageous fine, just like when you search for things, just fine. So yeah, we'll take that. Mary Ann?
Well, and I'm thinking as I'm listening to these questions about the font and about the headline size. I mean, all this is templated, so in theory, if we bring it out and if there's a lot of comments, I would think it should be pretty straightforward for them in their five hours a month, if you said, you know what, we're going to have to make a shift here to be able to go on in.
Yeah.
This kind of a site.
That's the benefit of having the webmaster, is I can focus on content and they can focus on things like font size and stuff like that.
Any final comments? All right, Cindy, thank you. Thank you for the update.
I just have one more. Sorry, I had my.
Oh, yes.
No worries. And then I would say around that time, that January, February, as people are starting to pull papers to get ready for the next election, it's something going to be on that homepage that'll be, you know, informative about, you know, processes or things of that nature. That kind of stand out and get people to kind of see what the process, you know, if they're willing to, wanting to volunteer. You know, I know that we're trying to create the orientation process for elected members and officials and, and things like that. So that's going to be something that hopefully will be highlighted and, you know, easy to find for people that are interested in that information when the time comes.
Yeah, absolutely. So it'll definitely be on the news section. But we also, when we spoke the other day at one of the forums, there was a request to include, you probably know the current website has the COVID-19 banner up at the top. We can, we can add another banner for anything that we want to promote. So whether it's town elections, or a waterman break, or something like that, it's a way to, just another way for people to visually understand and see what's happening.
Okay, thank you so much.
Great. Thank you again. Nice to see you. Next item, perambulation of the bounds. Director Lustig. So this was back in November 6th. Dan, Engineering Department, Kate, Tony, Tom, hi, Tom. We went around and signed the markers, which is a requirement every five years. And you're here to just request a vote and describe it, so the floor is yours.
Sure, and I guess I'm going to thank you for taking a moment of silence at the beginning of this meeting for Anthony Delgazo. He came in my office shortly after I was appointed permanently in March to the director's position and said, it's the year we have to perambulate the bounds, and he was very excited about this. So certainly something that I, I know he really enjoyed, that sort of ceremonial and very, kind of feeling traditional New England feeling type event that we had. So per Mass General Law, we are required to inspect the borders of the town of Needham with other neighboring communities to make sure that they are intact. And that's what we did on November 6th. Our engineering department, essentially the entire department is involved. And I have the Assistant Town Engineer, who's currently the Acting Town Engineer for us here as well. These are technical questions, but they go through and they make sure that the bounds of the community are visible and accessible and help us. Some of them are not, some of them are in private property, some of them are not always the most easy to access as far as wet areas go, or, or shrubbery and that sort of thing. So they prepare everything for us in advance, and then we drive around the community and inspect all of these markers. So that event occurred on November 6th. We had Select Board Member Dan Matthews there, and the chair joined us partway through, I believe, the town manager was designated, his, his representative for a portion of the event, to go through that sort of ceremonial process. So what you have before you is a motion to validate the process that we went through back on that date and acknowledge those bounds with our neighboring towns.
Right. Thank you for all your, your help, for making it look easy for us. I remember the last stop, we had to bring out a ladder. Oh, damn, I don't think you needed the ladder. I was very impressed, but some of us did. So thank you for all your work, making it easier for us. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve and sign the attached records of the town boundary markers that were witnessed during the perambulation, which took place November 6th, 2021.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second? Motion and second? Any discussion on this?
If I could, just, yeah, it's, it is one of those kind of traditional events. I always just like to be clear, though, that we don't actually perambulate, that is, walk from bound to bound. We mainly DPW staffer drives us to within sight of the bounds, or the closest point on the road to the bound, and we perambulate from the truck to the bound, mark it, and come back again. But, and the bounds are basically, in our case, they're all granite boluses, which is these four-foot tall or so sticks of granite. And, but they are all there, and we, and, and I appreciate the work that everybody, that everybody put into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Mary Ann?
I just want to say how sorry I was to have missed it this year by being away, but it is, I think, one of the coolest Select Board trips. So I know why Tony was excited about it, so.
Absolutely. Something to look forward to, yes.
Just a comment. I think this summer in Belgium, the farmer in his field moved one of the borders blocks of Belgium and made it bigger. Did anyone make Needham bigger?
We didn't see what happened on the ladder.
Yeah, right, that's right.
We're good?
We're good.
Great. Any further discussion? Seeing none, come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
I'm voting a traditional I.
Very New England of you. Kevin?
I.
And the chair will also vote I. Thank you again.
Thank you, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Town Manager. Kate?
Chair, the first is the initial discussion of our budget priorities, which help frame our capital and operating budget submissions, both of which are due to be produced in January, the first, at your next meeting. Next week, we'd ask for a final approval of the capital plan, which we would then distribute to the finance committee, and then the operating budget at the end of January. So the proposed budget priorities track those that were adopted last year in some ways. We continue to note that recovery from COVID-19 is one of our highest priorities, and also initiatives that ensure that we're welcoming inclusive communities. So those were the highest priorities last year, and we continue to see those. Other items really track the goal categories that the board has adopted goals under. That is, you know, physical, mental well-being, particularly renovation, reconstruction and preservation of our capital assets, including infrastructure. So you will see, if you are to adopt this goal, some additional requests for staffing and support in both park and rec and public works. This is meeting some of our trash issues and updating our fields and really trying to improve that outdoor space that people have really come to rely on during the pandemic years. Other items that are in our goal categories include economic opportunity, sustainability, transit, being able to connect, financial sustainability, efficiency. And finally, number 11 is a new one this year, but something that we, we talk a lot about, and I think we may sometimes not think about, but we are really working on managing our resources so that we don't have to resort to proposition, to an app override, except for in extraordinary cases, and, you know, those do come up, and they have come up, but there are communities where they have to or do resort to operating overrides on a more frequent basis. And we take it as our high priority to live within our means and to structure the budget that way. And really want to hear from the board whether that's something you want us to do, because that is what we're doing. So we would ask the board to take a vote on the budget priorities next week, but if there are things that are not here that should be, or there are things that should be highlighted, or if there's something that should be removed, it would be helpful if we could hear from the board on that.
Great, thank you. I will say where I'm sitting, that's exactly how we want to avoid those overrides. And we know sometimes they are, you know, you have to do them. But since I'm on the board, I think I could spend once, you know, the school side, if I'm not right. But that is a goal for me and I think for this board. But we will look this over, and I just ask everyone to look it over, any questions or comments? We can get back to the town manager for discussion. Thank you.
This is our second discussion with the board on the capital plan.
Welcome again, Katie.
Thank you. Welcome, Katie and Dave. A few notes, a few comments about FY '23 and the '24, '25, '26, '27. And then if Dave has anything he'd like to add or answer any questions. So in, on page one, it starts the FY '23 capital project request. These are the ones that we provided to you at your last meeting. And the stack of request documents, these refer to all of the years. Just a couple of things I wanted to note in '23. I know the board has been carefully tracking the Klaxton Field lighting project. And probably not the best news, but last week, Weston and Sampson, which is our engineering consultant, completed their soil borings, and they, some of the results are concerning in terms of the soil that's under those fields, which is probably not a great surprise, given that it was a previous landfill. They're thinking about doing further testing, but we are, the public works folks just left. We're meeting with the commission, they met with the commission last night. The commission is thinking about how to move forward with that project, whether there's ways we can change it and keep it in this funding schedule, whether the lights are something that we can install there or not. So it is, the one thing that's clear is that it will not be done by the spring of '23, which we were really working very hard for. But the soil certainly is just not going to support the existing project. So the commission and the DPW staff will. So the commission and the DPW staff will be working together to figure out what to do next there, whether there are alternatives to support girls softball. Only thing in FY23, that's different. In FY24, which begins on page four, just wanted to note again, this rooftop unit replacement project at the Broad Meadow and Elliott. This has become a high priority for the schools and for the building maintenance department. The design is in FY23 and you can see there that we are planning to borrow for that rooftop unit replacement. Very difficult to get the rooftop units replaced at two schools in one summer. So this project may take a while to complete, but we're starting to design and we'll be getting it moving forward. I would note that the Central Street Bridge replacement project is for the construction is included in FY24. We continue to find every funding source possible. And we are working on a white paper that clearly delineates why this project is the perfect candidate for the federal infrastructure funding moving forward. The Quiet Zone Safety Upgrades, this is a new addition for 24 and for 25. And this is something where we just wanted to make sure that we haven't, we have it here as TBD. We want to make sure the board wants us to program it in. I assume you do since you set it as a goal. And if you do, we will work that into the plan. We do recommend it, but because it's another expensive item. And unlike Broad Meadow and Elliott, it is somewhat optional, but I know that the board feels very strongly about it. And as we know, the public does. So if you, if you, if that's the sentiment of the board, we need to hear that tonight and we'll work that in for next week. The only thing, we just continue in some of those areas that are TBD. They're waiting on more information or we're just not sure with a lot of our staffing changes that we have, whether the projects will move forward. Most of the things under TBD are whether we can use ARPA, whether we can find infrastructure funding. And so in the out years, some of those might, if they can't be funded through other sources, be moved back into the categories of cash or debt. Dave, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yes, on page 11 of the summary. There was an oversight, the Public Works Infrastructure. The department request is actually eight million, I'm sorry, $2,744,000. And the recommendation under tier one is also $2,744,000. What the $2,594,000, which is on the printed version, represents is the construction cost associated with Public Works Infrastructure. And the $150,000 was missed when we were preparing this report. The final report comes to the board for your action next week will have the corrected numbers.
Thank you for that.
And one other project, which is being recommended under tier one of a similar nature to the Broad Meadow and Elliott School is the water treatment plant, HVAC Systems. We're looking at replacing and upgrading the HVAC systems at the water treatment plant. And similar to, similar to the Broad Meadow School and Elliott School project that's designed in one year in construction and the next year. Obviously, the size of the building is much smaller than the two school buildings. So the cost is also much less. Cost is approximately designed in implementation of $400,000. Whereas the design and implementation associated with the HVAC rooftop units at the two schools is $6.1 million, which again, as the Town Manager noted, the implementation phase would be by debt. Whereas in the case of the water treatment plant, it would be on cash.
Great, thank you for that information. And like we said, there's a three round process. This is round two of three. The question did arise about the Quiet Zone Safety Upgrades. That is a priority and a goal of this board. And it was asked of us if that's something we wish to put in for the $1.34 million. Just make sure I have consensus on that from where I'm sitting. I'm 100% in favor of that. Just want to make sure that's where the board is tonight. Mary Ann?
I think that is where the board is tonight, or that's where I am certainly tonight. So I'm still in favor of that. I have a process question though. I just, I know that there are a number of these that we're hoping to figure out whether they could be funded with ARPA funds versus using our captured debt. How do those two timelines come together? How are we seeing some of these coming together?
So most of those are in the out years.
So we just don't worry? We just like, we'll figure, we'll adjust that.
The Center Street Bridge Replacement, we, we have, it is listed in our FY23, but it is new and we wouldn't move forward with it. We would do some, if, if the reports showed more degradation, we would post the bridge with weight limits and things like that to move forward. But generally speaking, the items in FY23 that are in that category, the Pollard School locker room retrofit, we just need to hear what's happening with, you know, the Pollard project. The school master fit plan financing, again, we need to hear from their current refresh. Public Works Facilities Improvements, I will be recommending that as tier two. And I think we're going to be able to fund that one. It's really important for us. Big Valley Trash Receptacles, again, we would delay them if we can't get it. The library, there are several, the library item in terms of the space study, we really need to give Kim a couple of months to get on board with that. Cricket Field Building Improvements, that the alternative funding source there is the CPA. Did they file that one? They did, they did file that one. So we'll see, we'll see what, where the CPA wants to go with that one. Open Space Acquisition, this is filed every year at the same amount and it's just there as placeholder. So that's an example of, you know, by the time we get here, this meeting next year, we'll have a lot more certainty about what can be funded and what can be moved forward.
Great, thank you for the discussion. So it's safe to say that Quiet Zone, that was asked of us is, we have consensus to keep that in this. Is that correct? Great, yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you. Town Manager?
Okay, just a couple of things. First, next week is, begins holiday season here. The town hall is closed Friday, the 24th Christmas Eve, because Christmas is Saturday. The town policy and the union contracts provide for the half holiday, the last working day before Christmas. So that's the 23rd. So they are posted on the door if you saw them. So it's unusual in the years where Christmas is on, the Christmas holidays on a weekend. The same is true for the New Year's holiday, which is Saturday. Town Hall will be closed on New Year's Eve. There, we are having a celebration of Tony Delgazo's service tomorrow at 3:00 PM at PISAB. If anybody is available and they want to attend. We are asking people to park at DeFazio. It's going to be a difficult parking situation for her. We are still collecting Toys for Tots. Kate reminded me of that one downstairs in our office through December 17th. The fire department picked them up today. It was overflowing, so people are really being very generous with the Toys for Tots. And we may be one of the only locations nearby. And Park and Recreation Winter Programming Registration opens on December 15th, which is tomorrow. Their brochure is fantastic. They really, they've done an amazing job and they have some really interesting new programs, including one I want to go watch, which is some sort of cooking event or tasting or kids cook off or something. It looks fantastic. So those are available. The documents available now and registration opens tomorrow. That's what we have to do.
Thank you, thank you for the update. Item on the agenda is board discussion. We have two items. The first one is the Civil Rights Suit Update. And what I'm going to do, I'm going to read a statement. As many of you know, we are presently in litigation on the Marvin Henry matter. We have been asked often where we stand as far as the timeline and to make comments. And because of the pending or current litigation, we are very limited in what we can say. So my goal tonight is to read a statement to update the community and there will be no further comment, expect a comment before May 2022. So I'm going to read the statement and then not going to open up for discussion with the board. I'd like to move on to the next item on the agenda. So this is an update on the status of the lawsuit filed by Mr. Marvin Henry against the town of Needham and several members of the Needham Police Department. The suit was filed by Mr. Henry's attorneys on July 7th, 2021, United States District Court for the District of Massachusetts. On September 30th, 2021, Judge Allison Burrows issued a scheduling order for the timetable for the future handling of the litigation. Pursuant to the scheduling order, motions to add parties or amend the pleadings must be filed by February 1, 2022. And all fact discovery, not including experts, must be completed by May 2, 2022. The court will then hold a status conference on May 3rd, 2022, at 9:30 AM to set deadlines for expert discovery and the filing of dispositive motions if needed. The Select Board acknowledges that this is a serious matter, that there's public concern regarding the allegations raised in the lawsuit. The Select Board believes that Mr. Henry did nothing wrong, is mistakenly identified as a suspect and a shoplifted complaint, detained at the scene. Because Mr. Henry has filed suit against the town, the town's ability to comment is necessarily limited. The board does not expect to make any further statement before May 2022. The Select Board reaffirms its support of the men and women of the Needham Police Department, its commitment to approving the police policies and practices, and its commitment that Needham is a just and equitable community for all. Thank you. Next item, we come to committee reports. And I believe Mr. Matthews has a report on housing.
I did want to provide a report, if I may, Mr. Chairman, on the Affordable Housing Working Group, which is set up by the Planning Board.
Yep.
And Marcus and I are assigned from this committee to work on that. And there are 12 members total on the committee at this point. The first thing is actually kind of a small thing in the note to future selves thing.
Sure.
The, the committee is made up, it's charged to be made up of members of various boards around town. The Select Board, the School Committee, the Planning Board, the Community Preservation Committee and so on. The problem is that by, that all those committees meet on different days in order to avoid conflicts with each other so that they can go visit each other when need be. But when you draw people from those committees, that means it's very hard for them to make the set of meetings. So my recommendation for the future would be that it might be good to, when having representation from a broad group of community groups to say, to ask them to nominate, that Board of Committee to nominate someone. And they could nominate one of their own members, but sometimes they're kind of really requiring someone to add an extra meeting to something when they've already got a very full schedule. It might have worked better. But we did manage to build out a full schedule of meetings running all the way up till April. So hopefully this is going to work. The second though is, then it gets into the substance. We know that there, as, as housing prices rise and the tendency under the current rules of engagement to really develop the lots that are buildable in town to their maximum, that housing affordability is increasingly a challenge for moderate income families in any kind of a market sense. And at the same time, and we, and we've talked about this, the subsidized housing in town, particularly the Needham Housing Authority properties have suffered from, from years of having not enough funding coming in to support the capital needs. It's hoped that that funding is now going to be available from the federal government, but we need to make sure that it gets done and that it gets done right. This committee is charged with working out a set of recommendations to try to, to, to develop some policies that might go back to the Planning Board or to other boards and committees and ultimately to town meeting to, to address what is actually a very complicated set of issues in terms of certain kinds of programs work well in some settings, not in others. Some things that are well intentioned in terms, turn out to have unintended consequences. And, and there's a lot of strong, a lot of hardworking people on this committee, a lot of knowledgeable people. But working through this is a very difficult, difficult topic, particularly because there's so much to talk about and a sense of urgency and the difficulty of the issues. So I'd say a couple of things. I hope, it's my hope that, and I think town meeting, which had heard the report from the Planning Board at the beginning of this, is that we can get some actionable recommendations to town meeting this in advance of May. And if we're not able to do that, at least get them far enough so that they can be moved forward by the Planning Board by, by, by the spring. Or other boards, as the case may be. For example, the Housing Authority is actually doing very well on its, its, its own efforts to do its improvement project. If there's help that they need from the town though, we need to tee up how we're going to do that and how we're going to make that fit. So there's a lot going on and a sense of urgency. And what I would say is, this is very important stuff. And we've seen that really, to a certain extent, it's kind of flying a little bit under the radar in terms of people are busy in town. The other obligations, we've had, we had a lot of talk about this when, when specific zoning issues come up, but not many people watch the meetings or we don't know how many are reviewing the minutes or whatever. But there's a, there's a sense that there may not be broad discussion about this going on in the community. What we're talking about is making changes to development rules or zoning rules or how funds are used to support, to encourage different kinds of housing or things that may affect, have budget implications further down the road. And one thing I know from sitting at this board, Mr. Chairman, is generally speaking, people don't like change in their neighborhoods. This is, if we're going to address affordable housing issues, we are going to have to take steps as a town that do affect neighborhoods, that do affect community-wide circumstances, that do affect budgets, that may require additional school facilities or any one of a number of things, depending on, on what direction we go in. People need, the other thing that we get from sitting here is usually, frequently, people pay no attention at all until something is happening right next to them. Then it's like, how could this possibly happen? What's the matter with you? No, we need the community to follow this and to be engaged and to let us know, either if you think we're on the wrong track or on the right track or that we should be, that something that we're talking about should be done differently. Because ultimately, these are, these are going to be decisions that are made by boards and committees of elected officials and by town meeting and by other entities working privately in the community as well. So we need to have that engagement if this is going to be successful, particularly if we want to do it in a timely way. I would particularly point out, all of the meetings of this, of the Housing Working Group, as with other, most other town and board committee meetings, including this one, are available in the town's YouTube website, which courtesy of the efforts of Cindy Roy Gonzalez are going to, are readily available on the, on the internet and are usually posted pretty free, pretty soon after the meetings occur. And there's a special thing, maybe you're not supposed to tell this on TV, but you can use the YouTube setting to speed up the playback. And most people talk very slowly and deliberately in these public meetings. So you can watch them at 1.5 speed so that the two hour meeting doesn't take you two hours to watch. And you'll still find you get just about everything out of it. We'd highly commend people to follow this process, pay attention and let your community leaders know how you feel about how it's going. I went a longer, a little longer than my intended short report, Mr. Chairman, but thank you.
It's a critical subject topic with no easy answers. So understand how complex it is to, to give a lot of background. I hope you'll do many check-ins as we move forward and encourage everybody to watch it. It's going to affect us as a community. And I think it's important to, as Dan said, know if we're on the right track, wrong track, get as much input as we can as we move ahead. So thank you. Yes, Mary Ann?
I could just do a very quick update on appointments, which as we all know, kind of waited until this fall until we got Miles on board and then got through town meeting. So some appointments showed up this week. I am hoping that next week you will have the Climate Planning Action Committee and the Transportation Planning Committee also. and the Transportation Planning Committee also, so that we can get those committees appointed and we will kick them off in January. I do think the Climate Planning Committee may have some of the same scheduling challenges that were described for housing, so we'll see when we get there.
Thank you, look forward to that list. Any other committee reports? Okay, then I ask for a motion to go into executive session under exception three and exception six. Under exception three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating, litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, I so declare. And exception six, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. The chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect, negotiation position of the public body. I so declare not to return to open session prior to adjournment. Is there such a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kevin?
I.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Good night, everybody.